The Monday, October 1st, regular meeting of the 34th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Prince, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Here.
Councilmember Kadekko?
Here.
Councilmember Plaid Onson?
Here.
Councilmember Stedman? Mayor Protem Turbrick?
Here.
And Mayor Odweare?
First order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard with support from Councilmember Baker. Any corrections, additions? Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
And Turbrick?
Yes. The agenda has been approved. Next up, we have the invocation. Reverend Tal Sullivan is with us. Please rise.
Father in heaven, it is a great privilege for us to be able to approach you and thank you for this time that we have. Lord, to thank you for the freedoms that we have in this nation. What a rich land we live in. And God, we never want to take for granted all that you have blessed us with, and I thank you for the opportunity to be able to, in a public forum, call on you and ask for your blessing. And God, we do certainly ask that right now. We ask for your blessing upon our city, upon Berkeley, God, and our leaders. We ask that you would direct them and give them wisdom, and we ask, Lord, that you would bless them in their homes, their families, God, in their work, and obviously here, and in all of the leading of city decisions and all the matters that come before them. We ask for your blessing upon them. God, we want to see your blessings on our nation, and we know that the only way that that happens is when we come to your leadership. Thank you, God, that you've designed structure and authority in all of our lives, and that when we submit to it properly, that's when we see things working the best. And so, I pray, Lord, for our leaders, that you would guide them now as they make decisions. I pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please remain standing for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have reached the citizens' comments portion of our meeting, where you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Please remember that council members will not engage you in any discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or Department of the City, please leave your information on the clerk's desk. You may speak on a specific agenda item while it is being considered. When you come up to the microphone, please state your name and the city of residence.
Good evening, Eric Onson, City of Berkeley. November 15th is America Recycles Day, and in recognition of that, the Environmental Advisory Committee will be accepting nominations again for our annual Recycler of the Year Award. We're seeking individuals that have gone above and beyond in their efforts for recycling. We will have forms available at the library, and I have some here if we could leave them at City Hall, and we're going to try to work with the city to save a little paper, be a little greener, and post it on the city's website as well. Completed forms can be returned to the Public Works Department, and the address for that is on the form. And, as I said, this is our fourth year, and we've had winners that have been in elementary school and also senior citizens. So, anyone can recycle, and please remember that it's good for the environment, but the city also saves money when we keep items out of the landfills and recycle those. So, with that, I'd also like to encourage everyone to attend our next meeting, which is Wednesday, October 3rd, at the Public Safety Department at 7:00 PM. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
John Courtney, Berkeley, and I'm opposed to the current parking proposals regarding all of the signs that are posted on Eaton, Stanford, Oxford, and making those areas into a fire lane, mainly because many of the residents that are on Oxford have to park on the opposite side. So, when they have family members come into town and that, there's no place for them to park. Now that you re-zoned that and making those other streets fire lanes, those other residents now have no place else to park. So, you're compounding the parking situation with the Vincenta Garage. In addition, in looking at the original application, based on the square footage, they should have had 92 parking spaces. Based on my calculations, I sent you all an email, so if I'm in error in the calculations, forgive me, and I apologize for the typos, a little computer error there, but Vincenta should have had 92 parking spaces, and the city, in the process of re-zoning, they re-zoned all of those residential streets as off-street parking to accommodate those businesses. And that's wrong. Those are residential streets, residential homes, and they're being utilized by the business, and it shouldn't be. So, I'm opposed to the current proposal. You have those signages there. It's an inconvenience to the family members that come into town for parking, as well as those where they have been laid down. Now, it's more of an inconvenience mowing the grass, because now they've got to mow around the posts and that. Also, in looking at Vincenta Garage, I saw that there was two permits pulled for tank removals. There was no documentation regarding that, and I would still like to see the state and federal documentation that the former owners and the current owners were in compliance with the EPA's documentation on that. That's about it right now. I could certainly understand Vincenta Garage, the business has put in a lot of money, jumped into a lot of hoops, in order to bring their business here into Berkeley, and I can understand the city needing the tax revenue, but the parking is unacceptable, and the current proposal is unacceptable. Thank you.
Sir, can you sign in, please?
Seeing nobody else jumping up to the microphone, we will proceed on to our order of business. First up is tonight's consent agenda. Ms. Prince, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Item number one, approval of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the regular city council meeting on September 17th, 2012. And item number two, approval of the warrant. Matter of approving warrant number 1258.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Support?
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Kadekko with support from Councilmember Plaid Onson. Any discussion? Okay. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Kadekko?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Turbrick?
Yes. The consent agenda has passed. I will now move on to the regular agenda. Since we have no recognitions or presentations, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number two on tonight's regular agenda?
Motion number M-5912, matter of approving the revised Articles of Incorporation for SACRA.
Is there a motion to approve M-5912?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion to approve made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Kadekko. Ms. Prince, do we need to call a roll on that? It's moving supported. I think we're good. Mr. Sessa?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protem and City Council. I'd just like to give you a brief overview of this item that's before you. Basically, please note that SACRA has incorporated the Articles of Incorporation since 1976. Now, the primary reason that we are here this evening is to ask you to consider some changes. Now, some of the items that we're looking to update are things such as the name of the organization, the members of the organization, and some changes in law. The revised articles were developed by SACRA Subcommittee that included representatives from Berkeley, Ferndale, and Troy, and I'm pleased to say that I was one of the Subcommittee members for this review. Please note that these articles were approved by a unanimous vote of the SACRA Board. However, in order for them to be effective, this same version now has to be approved by each of the governing bodies of the communities that are members of SACRA, which there are 12 to date. The City of Huntington Woods has reviewed them, and they have approved them. Now, with that, I'd like to introduce two of our key SACRA representatives. The first is Mr. Jeff McKean. He is the general manager for SACRA, and also Mr. Bob Davis. He is general counsel for SACRA, and they are here this evening to help me address any questions the city council may have on this issue. But with that, Mr. McKean, is there anything else that I've missed or that you would like to add?
Your fine.
Thank you, sir. Counsel. Mr. Mayor?
Any questions, discussion from council, for either Ms. Sessa or Mr. McKean or Mr. Davis? Mr. Baker?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Madam City Manager, and thanks to you guys for coming out tonight to join us in this conversation. The thought occurs that we have the opportunity to spend just a moment to help ourselves and those watching tonight to better understand the nature of SACRA, what it is that they do, what the acronym stands for, things like that. So, I'd like to offer you a moment to give us a brief overview of the many services that this group provides and why this is a good thing for communities like ours.
Thank you. Jeff McKean, general manager of SACRA. I'm also the general manager of SACRA as well, but we're here tonight to just talk about SACRA. SACRA is a community-owned organization. We have 12 member communities, all of whom are in southeastern Oakland County. Our official name is Southeastern Oakland County Resource Recovery Authority, and we provide all the solid waste services for the residents of Berkeley as well as our 11 other member communities. So, we pick up all your trash, all your recycling, all your yard waste, and we process the material, take the recycling, turn it into materials we can sell, and therefore reduce your costs, and properly dispose of the trash, and turn the yard waste into compost that we give back to the community for gardeners. We've been in existence since the early 1950s, been through a lot of changes since then, obviously, but we feel we do a very good job of providing all the needs of our member communities.
Thank you. I think it's a good timing with the discussion tonight with the citizens' comment earlier today about the Recycler of the Year Award coming up here, that here's an organization that helps make that happen, so...
Yes, and we appreciate that as well. Our residents recycle a lot of material. We processed about 19,000 pounds of material last year, but there's a lot of material that's still in the trash that we want out of the trash into recycling, so we can improve a lot in that area.
Nice. Thank you. And a quick process question for the city manager, if I may. You mentioned, as was just mentioned as well, that there are 12 communities that will be reviewing and considering these articles, and we are the second of the communities to view this. This is just a timing thing, right? There's no issues or known challenges from the other organizations. This is just how the calendar falls, that Huntington Woods was first, and we happen to be second because of scheduling. Is that correct?
That's correct, Your Honor. It's just a matter of scheduling. I know the other communities have already scheduled their meeting dates with Mr. McKean. It's just a scheduling issue. That's the best of my knowledge.
Yes, I have two still to schedule, but it's just a scheduling issue. All the meetings are on Mondays or Tuesdays, so...
Sure, sure. There's only one of you to go around, so... Great. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Other questions? Discussion from council? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen, also for being here to answer any questions and to tell our residents a little bit more about what SACRA does. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M-5912?
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Turbrick?
Yes. M-5912 has passed.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Ms. Prince, would you please call item number three?
Motion number M-6212, matter of casting Berkeley's official vote for two individuals to serve as directors of the Michigan Municipal Liability and Property Pool and direct the city clerk to send them in the marked ballot.
Is there a motion to approve 6212?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard with support from Councilmember Plaid Onson. Ms. Sessa?
Counsel, this is simply a requirement and something that needs to be considered by the city council. The first is to consider voting for Mr. Robert Clark. He is an incumbent, and he's also the mayor for the City of Monroe. The second is Paula Zelenko, who's also an incumbent, and she is a manager for the City of Burton, and they do have a blank slate in case anyone wants to submit their names as a writing candidate. But for now, Your Honor, these are the two individuals that we're asking you to consider, and however the council votes, we will submit those names to the board.
Discussion from council? Write-in? Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M-6212?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Turbrick?
Yes. M-6212 has passed. Ms. Prince, would you please read item number four?
Ordinance number 0412, matter of adapting an ordinance of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan to rezone property described as lots 337 and 338 of the Lackmore Boulevard subdivision from single-family residential district R1D to parking district P1. First reading, set date certain October 15th, 2012.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve 0-4-12 with a date certain of October 15th?
Move to approve 0-4-12.
Support?
Support.
0412 has been moved by Councilmember Kadekko with support from Councilmember Plaid Onson. Ms. Sessa?
Counsel, I really don't have too much to add. I'd like to ask our city planner, Ms. Vanson, to give a good summation of the Planning Commission's public hearing that was held back on September 25th, 2012. The only thing I'd like to add is to simply inform everyone that the Planning Commission is recommending this re-zoning to the city council, but as it said, the city council has the final say on all re-zonings. And again, please note that this is a first reading. We will need a second reading on this, Your Honor. With that, I'd like to turn it over to our city planner, Ms. Vanson, to give us a brief summary of this item. Ms. Vanson?
Good evening. As Ms. Sessa indicated, the Planning Commission held a public hearing. That's required under state law and Berkeley City Code. They are required to make findings of fact and make a recommendation to you. They're supposed to review the existing uses of the property, of the use of the property itself and the surrounding area, the zoning classification of the surrounding area, the suitability of the property in question to the uses permitted under the existing zoning, in this case, single-family residential, the trend of development in the area, along with any recent changes, and the objectives of the current land use plan. Public hearing was held. There was one resident that spoke in favor of the proposed re-zoning. The Planning Commission concluded the re-zoning was a good use of the land, that it was consistent with the master plan, it would not alter the character of the neighborhood, and it would benefit the residents. And so, a motion was made to recommend re-zoning. It was passed. I noticed these were draft minutes that I did last week late after the meeting, and Commissioner Morel did abstain, not because of what's listed here, but because his brother's in a possible land negotiation with the applicant, and so he felt it best to abstain. So, aside from him abstaining, it was unanimous. The remaining eight members voted in favor of recommending the re-zoning to you, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Vanson. Questions, discussion on this? Councilmember Blanchard?
How many additional parking spaces will this gain us approximately in that area?
They have submitted a site plan, a preliminary one. I have not accepted any money for it yet, because that's really the cart before the horse. If, for some reason, this re-zoning didn't go through, they wouldn't be able to do the parking lot. So, we haven't really gotten to that point as far as landscaping and the configuration of the parking. It's obviously a small lot, so it's going to be along the lines of...it's going to be smallish.
Other questions? Councilmember Plaid Onson?
It was actually more of a comment, and I was able to be present at the public hearing, and so it was, you know, interesting to see how the discussion went, and for the most part, this item was passed pretty quickly, and I might sort of make a point as to, you know, some of their discussion, and I'm sure everybody's had a chance to look at the lot, but for viewers at home, what we're looking at is a triangular lot that is across the street from an apartment building and basically abuts an alley. So, and it does have a residence on one side. For the most part, most of the abutments to this lot are either, you know, driveways or multifamily housing, things like that. So, in terms of the actual landscape of the neighborhood, this has, I think, fairly little impact. I mean, we've looked at other lots that intrude much further into neighborhoods, and this one, I would say, does not. And that was, I think, sort of the sentiment of the Planning Commission, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chairman Barnett, was that if ever sort of there was a spot that was awkward for a house anyway, this is one of those spots. I always look at re-zonings as very much a long-term proposal, so to me, it has nothing to do with Vincenta Garage and what their parking problems may or may not be, but what are we looking at in terms of our master plan, and what do we need to do in that area to achieve long-term goals for Berkeley? And for me, this is very consistent with the master plan. We've been looking at deeper lots along Woodward as a whole, especially as we start to look towards concepts like transit-oriented development, where we need to have...where we need to allow for a little bit higher density along those thoroughfares. So, it's very consistent, I think, with where we're trying to go and what we're trying to do. My ideal is never to have a privately-owned lot. You know, my ultimate dream is to have, you know, sort of zones of municipal parking, but in terms of where we're going, I think this is a step in the right direction. So, I realize I don't have the best record on parking lots around here, but I think in terms of looking at master plan and the site itself, this feels like the right place to me to make this kind of a move.
Thank you. Councilmember Kadekko?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Plaid Onson said most of what I was going to say. I did drive by there, and I applaud the efforts of Vincenta Garage in trying to, you know, increase the parking area in that area, and I think it would be a great spot for, you know, additional parking.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I again echo the sentiments of my colleague here in thanking Councilmember Plaid Onson for the summary. These are important conversations for the character of our community, and as I think about the master plan, I also agree that this is a good fit. It's absolutely in alignment with the intent of what we seek for many years to come. As we do talk about transit options, the notion of a stop somewhere around Woodward and Catalpa continues to come up, so this would certainly help with some proximity for park-and-ride, those kinds of things down the road. Of course, this is a private lot, to your point, but at least there's options there for doing other things that I think service the community above and beyond this particular establishment. So, instead, I'll shift some of my questions just to the process of next steps and things like that. Obviously, this is a first reading, so there's still further opportunities in this particular process, but I'm curious if there was a recap from Planning Commission or from the applicant or others in terms of if this were to proceed both tonight and with the second reading, when might any activity take place in terms of reconfiguring that lot?
It still needs to go for site plan approval. It has not done that yet. Once it gets city council's blessing and it is actually re-zoned, then it would go before Planning Commission. As I said, I do have preliminary plans, but I haven't accepted any money at this point because we needed to get through this first. So, just looking at it, I'm thinking we might be able to do it for the October agenda, perhaps, but it may be November as well for the site plan, but they could certainly proceed with demolition of the home at any point and get the area prepped, ready to go.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other discussion from council? I would agree with my colleagues in the fact that this is a little bit of a different re-zoning than some of the ones that we've had in the past that have, you know, encroached a little more on what our residents want or what they feel about their community in the area. This area, as Councilmember Plaid Onson described, it actually fits our master plan. It fits the area much better, and at least in my opinion, is much less contentious than, especially the most recent re-zoning for parking that we had here. Whenever we have these events, you know, these kinds of re-zoning that come to council, a number of things happen. It's not always that it's an easy decision, even though it seems like a majority of us or all of us actually up here right now seem to agree on this. That doesn't mean that we don't still take into account how it is going to impact the residents and how it is going to impact the neighborhood, and that we certainly don't think about it as critically, even though this one does seem to fit much more with what we're going. So, I do appreciate, you know, the people that are here. There was only one resident that did speak at the Planning Commission public hearing, which I was expecting a few more, but one resident was positive. We get that. We get a report from the Planning Commission that is overwhelmingly positive. We get the report from Ms. Vanson, and we hear, you know, our comments from council today. It makes these processes, this process especially, go a little more smoothly, so I thank everybody who was involved in that. And if there's no other discussion, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrick?
Yes. Ordinance 4-12 has passed. Ms. Prince, would you please read item number five?
Ordinance number 0512, matter of adapting an amendment to an ordinance of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, Chapter 106 Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places, Article 4 Sidewalks, Division 2 Construction and Repair, Subdivision 1 in General, Section 106-64, repaired by the City of the Berkeley City Code. First reading, set date certain October 15th, 2012.
Thank you, Ms. Prince. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 5-12 with a date certain of October 15th?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Baker. Support?
Support.
Support from Councilmember Blanchard. Ms. Sessa?
New counsel, this comes before you. I know that the city planner and I had discussed this several times. Usually, when individuals try to make some repairs to their sidewalks, five days is just not enough time for many reasons. Sometimes it's because of funding situations, and sometimes it's simply because it's hard to find a contractor that can do this type of work in such a small space. So, and there are other reasons as well, but we discussed it several times, and I know that after a good review between the city planner and I, we felt that at least 60 days would give an individual enough time in order to be able to correct this matter. Now, the ordinance still allows me to dispense with notice and time if, in my opinion, obviously with the advice of the city planner and some other individuals, if they feel that the sidewalk is unsafe and needs immediate repair, then I will have to address it, as it says, immediately. However, that's not always the case, and usually we have a little bit of time in order to address this. We just feel that five days was just a... We just feel that five days was just too short a time. And I know the city planner would like to add to that?
A couple of things. This is what happens with too much multitasking. I have to bring to your attention, it's actually Section one-oh-six-one-sixty-four. Sorry about that. And it is not September seventeenth today. It is October first. I had best intentions this was going to go in September, and it didn't, so I apologize for that. Yeah, as Mr. Sessa indicated, our code enforcement officer, when he would cite folks for trip hazards and so forth, it's really hard getting concrete contractors to come out, really hard to get them out for just one slab. Five days is, I, I don't know what planet folks were on back when this was written, when five days was, and I understand it's a safety issue, but it, it's unreasonable. And so I looked at various ordinances, forty-five days, sixty days was very common. I went with sixty days to give folks the benefit of the doubt, and since we are having such a hard time getting, or residents are getting a hard time having concrete contractors come out and give them estimates.
Thank you. Discussion from council, questions or comments? Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Mayor Protam, and good evening again.
Hi.
Thank you for the additional explanation about the nature of this change before us here. And if I can just explore for just a moment what we mean, what would be the ramifications of exceeding the, the time limit here? So in the past, it was five days, and now the proposal is sixty. So if, if there's an incident, if there's a trip hazard or other notation on a, on a sidewalk, residential or in the business district or anything like that, the, the owner has an opportunity to, to make a repair, as you mentioned, to bring out contractors to take care of that. And so what we're talking about here, if I understand this correctly, is that rather than giving them, you know, five days to, to make the change, and to your point, that's sometimes difficult logistically, they have up to sixty days to complete the repairs on their own.
Correct.
Meaning that they would pay for it in their expense, and they can find the right way to make that happen. If, if they were to, for whatever reason, be unable to do so after the, the sixty-day mark, what would be the next step that the city would help?
Well, a couple of things. We can go ahead and repair it and bill them for it, or we could ticket them for it. What we have run into, as I said, in the summertime most recently, was residents being very frustrated because they just could not get, they couldn't get estimates. They couldn't get anybody to come out. They had a couple of flags that needed to be fixed, and it was very frustrating. So we actually had discussions at staff meetings on whether the city's concrete contractor would be available to do that sort of thing. So if somebody really, they've exhausted all of their options, they're running out of time, they want to fix it, they just can't get anybody to come out, we would be able to do that. And, and the particular contractor would charge a reasonable rate. It wouldn't be punitive. It would just be, he's available.
Great. So if I could, could read into that for a moment? If, if someone were to make every effort to find an estimate or something, perhaps could they reach to the city to say, hey, could you do this on my behalf?
Yes.
Earlier than the sixty days?
Oh, yeah.
They wouldn't have to wait. They could reach out to the city to ask for help and then pay the appropriate fees.
Yes. And, and this is done to make it more reasonable. Five days was, we weren't enforcing this with five days. It's just, it's not reasonable at all. So we wanted to come up with something so that we weren't actually breaking our own law.
Right. And then one last question, in addition to not breaking our own law, certainly we're hoping to make sure people don't break their own necks or anything in between.
No, we don't want that either.
And so I do appreciate the fact that we still have the safety, we have the safety opportunity in here to say, if we deem this to be of sufficient importance or magnitude, we could take proactive action to, to move forward sooner than the sixty days. I'm pleased to see that in here as well.
Oh, yeah, that's going to stick.
So we can take action. So thank you for keeping that in there.
Sure.
Thank you. Other discussion from council? Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Just a quick, how often do we have to, well, in issue notices to repair sidewalks, or is it frequent or infrequent?
Yes. I, I could get, I, I don't have the numbers in front of me. I would be happy to do that and provide that to you in your report. But yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, there's trip hazards.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, Ms. Sessa.
Ms. Sessa?
You know, Council, this is something that I know has come to my attention in the past because of the need for these types of repairs. In the past, the city had a sidewalk replacement program that they, that they used to do. And it has been more than ten years now. I am looking at that again and working with the, with the Public Works Director to begin initiating that type of program. Again, it's, it's easier said than done, but, but I do intend to bring this before the city council so that we can go back to that system where that we can start making the repairs on a, on a schedule. And so, but for now, Your Honor, this is where we're at right now. But, but I do intend to address it.
Thank you.
Seeing no other discussion, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on ordinance five dash twelve?
Kadekell?
Yes.
Platt Onson?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Turbrick?
Yes. Ordinance five dash twelve has passed. Ms. Prince, would you please read item number six?
Motion number M-sixty-three-twelve, matter of approving a special use approval SU-01-dash-12 to Vincetta Garage Holdings, two-seven-seven-nine-nine Woodward, to allow the continuation of a waiting area with beverage service on the east side of the building within the Woodward District.
Is there a motion to approve M-sixty-three-dash-twelve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Platt Onson. Support?
Support.
Support from Councilmember Kadekell. Ms. Sessa?
Council, as you can see in the letter that was put together by Ms. Vanson, a public hearing was held by the Planning Commission on Sep-, on September the twenty-fifth, two thousand and twelve. I will ask our, our city planner to go over that report in just a second. But again, just for those out there, the Planning Commission did approve this recommendation with the following conditions, and they're as follows. One, that the outdoor area comply with the fire code by providing two means of ingress-egress. Two, that the berm and curb currently along the south side of Eaton be continued into the Woodward Service Drive. And three, should the property be sold or transferred, that this special land use approval be cease. So with that, I'll ask our city planner to go over the recommendation of the Planning Commission. Ms. Vanson?
Hi, again. This was, the outdoor seating area received Liquor Control Commission approval. It didn't go through the city's approval, so it, it has passed their requirements as far as it being safe and secluded enough. It, it did not go through the proper approval, so we're addressing that this evening. Planning Commission held a public hearing, as Ms. Sessa indicated. This is special land use, so they, you can put conditions upon this. It's not something that's allowed by right. It's something that comes before the Planning Commission and city council, and you can attach conditions to it. There are a number of standards for approval. The proposed use has to promote the use of land in a socially and economically desirable manner. The proposed use is necessary for the public convenience at this location. The proposed use is compatible with adjacent land uses. The proposed use is designed so that the public health, safety, and welfare shall be protected. The proposed use will not cause, cause injury to other property in the neighborhood. As I said, this particular outdoor area has already gotten approval, and so this is a little bit backwards from how we usually do it. The applicant indicated that currently the outdoor area is being used as a waiting area with just beverage service. The applicant did indicate a future desire to perhaps, since it's, he could add heaters and so forth. For those of you that may have watched the Planning Commission meeting, that caused the Planning Commission a lot of concern because generally, the outdoor areas are good for maybe six months out of the year. There was concern that if we started adding heaters, and since it's relatively sheltered, that all of a sudden, we've got an additional dining room. Maybe not in January and February, but an additional dining room. And they were concerned about maybe that causing additional burden on the neighborhood. And so there was a lot of discussion, as I summarized it, on how to address that, whether we should limit the, whether the city should limit the months of operation, whether the amount of service should be limited. I express concern that while that is something that you could put as a condition, it's ultimately not really enforceable. And I don't see that a waiter or a restaurant should be somehow prosecuted because they had chicken wings along with a couple of beers when they were waiting for their table. So that didn't really seem appropriate. There was discussion on the furniture. Should we have tables? Should we have heaters? And then there was some discussion about an additional fence maybe being required. Ultimately, the Planning Commission recommended approval, that the use be approved as a continuation of now how it's currently being used of a waiting area with beverage service only, that the outdoor area comply with fire code by providing two means, two means of ingress-egress. Right now, there's just one way through the planters. There needs to be two. The berm and curb that is currently show, it's currently abuts the, well, there's the building on the Eaton side, there's the sidewalk, and then there's the berm, and then there's the curb, and then there's Eaton. If, if you're really familiar with it, you'll notice that there's kind of a driveway that goes up to what is now the Eaton area. The Planning Commission made, or quite well, has recommended that that be changed into actual berm, and that furthermore, right now, if you are southbound on Woodward and you want to go into the Service Drive area, you can actually kind of cut across Eaton and just go southbound into the Service Drive rather than turning alongside of Woodward. I have the site plan, if it's helpful, instead of my undulating arms. That, that, and that's actually going to be an MDOT requirement. As I indicated in my report, MDOT is going to be making some changes in two thousand and thirteen. I don't know how much of the Service Drive they'll do. I know they are taking many notes on the Service Drive. However, MDOT has kind of been a little funny with Service Drive since it's not actually about moving cars. So what I suggested at the Planning Commission meeting, since this approval is good for one year, that they wait and see what MDOT does. And if MDOT takes care of it, good. And if they don't, then the applicant would need to. I'm going to pass this around.
I can pass mine, too, Amy.
So that's being passed around, and that's what they meant by the berm being continued. So, and that may be something that, like I said, MDOT addresses with their redo. If they don't, then the applicant would need to do it, and they would have, as I said, a year from approval in order to execute that. And I think I've covered everything. Are there any questions, or did I miss something?
Questions for Ms. Vanson first. Councilmember Kadekell?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Thank you, Ms. Vanson.
Sure.
It says, you know, about having it for beverages only. What is the average time of wait for a patron? And I see that Mr. Catalo is here today. If he could give us some insight into that?
Thank you, Councilman. As, as was noted, I'm Kurt Catalo with Vincetta Garage. I'm here with Eric Lines, who is manager of Union Joints, our little restaurant operation. Casey Crane, my partner, is not here today, but I appeared before the Planning Commission on Vincetta's behalf, along with her architect. To answer your question, Councilman, I think that we are proposing a continuation of that usage, which is essentially just giving people who are willing to wait for a table a place to wait for a table. And those ranges, those waits vary. They've been coming down a little just because the initial buzz has worn off. But right now, I would say that the average time spent out there is anywhere from fifteen minutes to an hour and a half, and it really varies, so.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Catalo while he is up here? Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Says you, we have a year to, to continue with this berm down there. What are we going to do? Leave those gigantic cement blocks there and those barricades, or how do we propose to handle that end of the Service Drive?
At the risk of podium swapping too much, I think that that's a question better directed to city planner Vanson, just because it is kind of out of, out of our realm. They appeared at Dream Cruise, and they never left. There were like two concrete pigeons that landed and never took back off. We understand that it's, it's born out of a concern that was brought up by the public safety department, so we're just kind of waiting to hear what we need to do. And as was indicated, it's really an MDOT decision, not ours.
Yeah, the barricade's exactly where that, that curb and that berm need to continue, and it's because of traffic cutting that way instead of entering the Service Drive the appropriate way. So I believe public safety is going to require that barricade to stay until the berm is put back.
Thank you.
Other questions for Ms. Vanson or Mr. Catalo before they sit back down, at least momentarily? Councilmember Baker?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protam. And thank you for coming out, and thank you again for the summary of the proceedings in the prior forums about this topic here. What I hear before us again tonight is specifically around the, the continuation of the, the outdoor waiting area. So there are many other items that have been discussed in recent days and weeks having to do with this particular establishment and the neighborhood with the parking and the streets and things like that. And our discussion today is focused specifically on the, the outdoor waiting area and things like that. So I will limit my questions to, to that topic as well. In terms of the, the waiting area, the, the notion of the additional ingress-egress has come up several times. And so I was curious for additional conversation or thoughts on your part as far as how we might go about accomplishing those, that additional ingress and egress.
Yeah. No, I think to that effect, we want to make sure that we comply with the fire code, and if the fire code requires that there are two means of ingress-egress, it's easily addressed by us just creating an additional opening by removing one of these semi-permanent planters that define the barrier. The barrier is defined really in compliance with the Liquor Control Commission's requirements to clearly define an area that is designated as an area you could serve alcohol. So they were fine with the planters. It's just a question of us making sure that we comply with Berkeley's fire code. And if it means two means of ingress and egress, it's a very easy fix for us, although it's a very heavy planter. So I think it's also important, I should have mentioned earlier, that we are really talking about a, a continuation. And it's a continuation that would be present whether we were serving alcohol in that area or not. And it's a continuation of keeping people who are waiting for a table comfortable and happy, and it doesn't, it's not something that increases our business. You never see us where we're empty on the inside but full outside. You know, I think it's, it's really an area where people are waiting, and even if we weren't able to have this waiting area, it's still an area where people could wait, and we couldn't, I don't know how we would keep them out of that area, and we'd just have to kind of push them out further. But it really is just, it's kind of a little holding area that works well because it's, it's not something where you hear voices in the adjacent apartments. It's not something where they interfere with other businesses. It's really a well-suited area with that existing marquee and everything of Vincetta Garage. And we just think it's well-suited for it, whether it's serving food, which is our ultimate goal, or not. But right now, we would just ask for a continuation of that usage.
Great, thank you. If I may, had an additional question around, and I'm not sure if this fits within this dialogue or not, so maybe it's more of a process question in terms of the, the valet service that's underway at, at the moment. As part of the, that area in there, and again, this might be on the other side of the, of the topic that we're looking at here today, we do have valet service. I was just curious, in terms of the prior conversations to help us come up to speed, was that brought up as well? Is that something before us here tonight, or is that something that would defer to the business or for a different conversation?
Well, I believe I, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the valet service was something that was implemented just to help ease that initial parking concern as we work to educate people to park it charter one, et cetera. Obviously, it's a complimentary valet service. It costs us five hundred dollars a week, but it's complimentary to our patrons. They enjoy it. I'm sure in the winter, they'll, they'll enjoy it a little more. It's become a little more complicated this week because of the new one-way streets and no right turn onto Oxford and such, because it limits our valet parking attendance ability to move cars to charter one, which is kind of the biggest hurdle that we face. It's, it is a service that even as we add additional parking, as we're talking about with ten-ten Eaton, that we would look at continuing. But eventually, we would rather spend that money on creating additional parking spots versus this temporary solution.
Great, thank you.
That was a very political answer, I thought. I thought that was well done.
Well done, indeed, indeed.
Councilmember Kadekell?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Mr. Catalo, while there are nice look, there's been discussion about the chargers and the cord going over the sidewalk. Is something being done to correct that through you or at this time?
Councilman, we did receive a notification that because the charging stations weren't on our original site plan, that using them would be unlawful, and so we've complied, and we do not use the charging stations anymore. I and we do not use the charging stations anymore. I do see how it would be problematic with the cord going over a sidewalk. I mean, it's something that, it's different if it's a garden hose watering the island or something. I could see how that would be problematic. And we don't want to get into the architecture of creating some sort of overhead device to plug into cars. It's unfortunate because it is a neat continuation of usage. I asked Mr. Curda, the original owners of Vincetta Garage, how they did it back in the day, and I think that they benefited from being grandfathered from 1919. Whereas, I absolutely understand that that could be a tripping hazard with a patron, a customer, just a resident, and we don't want to be that obstacle. So for now, they are dormant. It's nice that we have valet parking out there because with the barricades, it's difficult to get into Vincetta Garage already. And so the spots that used to be occupied with a Volt or a Leaf are now, I don't think you can get to it anyway. So it's, those barricades do a good job of making the charging stations obsolete.
Mayor Protam, if I may, are you planning on keeping them there for the looks, you know, like the old pumps were there?
Yeah, I think that because they were installed, and I just, I think that they are just in, they say a lot whether they're being used or not. They say that this is a very old building that still has the ability to look forward. I mean, Vincetta Garage is an excellent case study for readaptation, reusage. You know, it's in the current Michigan Preservation Blog, did a great story on it. And I think that those charging stations, whether they're plugged into something or not, says that you can save an old building by looking ahead. And, you know, as cool as the old pumps were that said, no gas, even if these new charging stations are there and say, no juice, I understand. So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I see a resident would like to address this issue?
Yes. John Courtney. I did get to see the last planning deal that went on. And regarding the covered area as being serving only, and I hear tonight that it's going to be beverage instead of beverages, that Kool-Aid or alcohol, beer, wine, hard liquor. I guess I also want to remind council that the state of Michigan has passed the super drunk driving law, and Berkeley has also adopted those codes and laws. So my understanding during that last meeting, people could be out there for two hours, a minimum of two hours, vary. So I also want council members to be aware that serving of alcohol is going to affect each individual differently, and that those patrons can be under the influence and be getting behind the wheel. So I do want to add this to the city council for your awareness and What I've given you is a chart. So it shows an individual that in a two-hour period consumes a number of, a couple of drinks, and how long it's going to take to have that alcohol be removed from their system. So once again, the state of Michigan has approved the super drunk driving law, and that Berkeley has also adopted those laws. Regarding the coverage area, those people are going to be out there for two hours. How much alcohol are they going to be consuming? And then be inside for another few hours, eating and drinking, and then getting behind the wheel. So again, I want to remind council of the serving of alcohol, beverages, and the concern of the residents and other people out there on the roadway. So I would be frankly, I believe a lot of that parking issue is related to the alcohol that's being served on the premises. And if you were to remove the alcohol, I think the parking issue could ultimately go away over a period of time. Initially, on the application, it says restaurant. Restaurant to me means food, not alcohol. And I understand everybody likes a drink with their meal. There are people out there that can't handle it. And it's those people that get behind the wheel, and it's those people that ultimately take the innocent lives out there. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And as you mentioned, we have already adopted and discussed the super drunk legislation here. We certainly support that in Berkeley, and we don't want to see anybody get behind the wheel of a vehicle after they've had too much to drink. In this case, I'm not sure how it's different than any other establishment that we may have that does serve alcohol. I mean, there are a number of bars that don't limit the amount of time you're there. And I think it's incumbent upon all of our residents and everybody who frequents any of these establishments to be responsible whenever you are going to consume any kind of alcohol. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Question from Mr. Catallo. Are your servers that work in this area trained in alcohol awareness, so they know what to look for and comply with the rules of the state?
That is correct. Our servers, our bartenders, are all TIPS certified, which is a federal program. It's a state program, and they all carry certificates. So it's definitely a mandate that we have from our managers and bartenders, and they are TIPS certified. And we obviously, in this business, take alcohol very seriously. I mean, it's paramount. None of this is worth endangering anybody. I can assure you of that. And so we're very proud that as a restaurant, that it's a family restaurant. And I'm very proud to say that the issues that you've had with Vincetta Garage have namely been parking. And we could have a lot the size of Pasquale's, but have a clientele like the Kentucky Derby infield, and this be a much different appearance. So we take that responsibility very greatly. And I think that our-
I do have to, sorry for-
Well, I'm sorry. You can't come up to the microphone and interrupt somebody else who's talking. If you want to say something-
I'll cease the podium. I'll give you the podium.
Please, address council. Do not address-
I do understand-
Microphone, please.
I do understand, Mr. Catallo. And unfortunately, I was shortly after they opened, I happened to see a hit-and-run of a vehicle back into another vehicle and leave the scene. It was a hit-and-run. And unfortunately, it just so happens to be one of the waitresses there. And unfortunately, and I can certainly empathize that she parked there thinking that her vehicle was going to be safe. And unfortunately, it took out her tail line. It was about 300 bucks to her. And that's unfortunate. And I also have seen other impaired drivers run the stop sign and almost run over a teenager on a skateboard right there in the corner of Stanford and Oxford. So just so that you're aware, and, you know, I'm sorry, your waitress had to put in a delay, but, you know, I did call public safety.
Okay. You know, we're not having that discussion right now. We can't get into, you know, individual incidents and what did or didn't happen. I appreciate you giving us your perspective on this as we discuss it. Thank you. Any other discussion, comments from council? With that, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry, didn't see you. Councilmember Platt Onson?
I was way slow on the draw there. Sorry.
Lucky I'm a lenient guy.
The only thing that I thought was an interesting point that Amy had brought up was the idea of, so we're restricting to beverage service. We've talked a lot in other ordinances and other things that we've passed about creating things that were unenforceable. I'm just curious about thoughts on that concern, if there's something we can do at that point, if it's worth discussion. Are we creating something that is difficult for our staff and a problem moving forward? And is it enough of a trade to restrict to beverage service as opposed to allowing something absorbent to go with their cocktail?
Ms. Vancen?
Well, as I recall, and Mr. Catallo may be able to recall this as well, when I advised planning commission that you could absolutely limit, you know, that was something you could tie to this use, however, it was unenforceable. Mr. Catallo did say that he would absolutely abide by this. And so I don't want to put words in his mouth, but he did say that. That's what I remember him saying.
That's correct.
He did say that. Okay.
Thank you.
I just wanted to throw out that if we wanted to discuss that, just because it's sort of moving forward, is this going to come back next year for discussion? Do we need to just look at it then in regards to food? Do we think food is enough of an issue to go through this process?
Mr. Mayor, if I may offer, this is something special land uses evolve. I was just looking up one that was originally approved, I think, 1995, and it's been back before because things change. And I think if Mr. Catallo's plans for parking end up increasing, and he decides that, and we find that there's enough parking there without having to do the valet and having to go around to charter one, and he decides he wants to install heaters, then at that point, I think it would be appropriate that he could certainly come back before the city council. And if there's enough parking year-round, and snow removal hasn't become an issue, or the snow plowing, that's the kind of thing that, since this seems to be a changing area, sometimes daily, it seems, as far as the changes in ownership and whatnot, I think that that would be the time that if Mr. Catallo decided he wanted to have food service and have heaters to provide more of a three-season space, then I think that once there's enough parking, that wouldn't be so much of an issue. Food for thought.
Thank you.
Or beverage for thought, either way.
Comments from council? Very well put. With that, is there a, or actually, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M6312, again, with the planning commission stipulations?
Platt Onson?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kodeckel?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes. Motion 6312 has passed. Ms. Prince, would you please call item number seven?
Closed session, made of appro-
Is, are we not?
Mr. Mayor Protam, our labor council is not with us yet. Can we go into communications? And hopefully, he'll be here by then.
Mr. City Attorney, what do we have to do to make that a reality?
Call the next one.
We can just skip seven for now and go to communications?
I would say, based on the representation by the city manager, that we will just go ahead with the communications first, and then resume into the closed meeting after that would be fine.
Is that okay with everybody on council?
It's fine.
Very democratic.
Do we have to officially vote on that?
Do we have to vote on that as some kind of amendment, or can we just-
That would be not necessary. Not for that.
Okay. With that, then, we will move item seven back and go to communications. Ms. Prince, who would be first?
Councilmember Baker.
Councilmember Baker.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mayor Protam, and good evening again, everybody. This is National Adopt a Shelter Dog Month. October is beginning of that. Happy October, everybody. And I ask that if you are considering adding an addition to your family, please do so responsibly. You know, dogs and cats are loving creatures who deserve long-term loving homes. So if you do choose to make that addition to your family here on National Adopt a Shelter Dog Month, please take that into consideration. There are several shelters locally that are available that you could reach out to and add a new member to your family and create organizations, including New Beginnings Animal Rescue, Homes Forever, Detroit Dog Rescue, and many others are excellent firms to help you a part of that. I'd like to take a brief personal welcome to a friend, a colleague, and a student of civics. With us tonight is Mr. Gary Hancock, whose assignment here is to study the city of Berkeley proceedings, and I had the opportunity to interact with him on several occasions about the kinds of work that we do here and the things that he's studying. So thank you, sir, for your interest in being a part of our session here tonight. In rapid-fire succession here, the Downtown Development Authority Board meets next week's Wednesday, October 10. Historical Committee extends its gratitude and thanks to residents and businesses throughout the community who have been very generous in sharing their archival photographs, many from the Vincetta Garage, and many from residents who have had family photos of Berkeley gone by. And many of the business owners have been very helpful with sharing their materials. As you know, we're compiling a photo book of the city's history. And so these images will be archived and shared and published for generations to enjoy. On the transit front, I want to thank all of you who have taken steps to help support the regional transit authority legislation, that it's working its way through the legislation process. And if you haven't had an opportunity to do so, please consider contacting our Senator Papa George or our Representative Ellen Hogan Lipton for additional thoughts and to express your questions or support for the regional transit authority initiative that's underway. And finally, I believe this following item will be mentioned by several of my colleagues, so I'll just lightly touch with a quote. I actually couldn't attribute this because I found this in so many places, so we'll call unknown or anonymous or a universal truism, as you see fit, Madam Clerk, to say, "Don't let your dreams go up in smoke. Practice fire safety." And again, "Don't let your dreams go up in smoke. Practice fire safety." In addition to this being National Adopt a Shelter Dog Month, the next week is the Specifics of Fire Prevention Week. And I'd just like to briefly thank our public safety department and for all the volunteers for putting on a terrific event. Last week's Saturday, we had an open house of fire prevention and awareness, safety demo, exhibits. They burned stuff. They cracked open things. They had exhibits. They had opportunities for the kids to interact with stuff. It was a tremendous event, and safe, fun time was had by all. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Blanchard?
Well, he stole most of my thunder, but I'd like to thank the volunteers and the public safety officers that worked very hard to put together our open house. It's always a great event for the youngsters because we like to try and teach them a little bit of, just look at the trucks and go ooh and ah. We like to try and give them a little lessons on stop, drop, and roll, and how to get out of smoke-filled houses and those sorts of things. So it's an educational thing. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it here because I was out of town. But from what I've heard, it went very well. And again, thanks to all the PSO officers and the volunteers that helped, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Platt Onson?
Just two quick things for me today. First, just a reminder to anyone tuning in late that they have until the end of October to nominate themselves or someone else as recycler of the year through the Environmental Advisory Committee. So applications online, in this building, and at the library. So please nominate anyone of any age who's doing a stellar job with that. And then a brief update from planning commission. They had two meetings in the last few weeks. One, of course, we pretty much just covered the agenda of. And the one prior was a public input session on the Coolidge traffic study. And it was very well attended, and lots of interest, and both from a sort of cyclist pedestrian standpoint, as well as from the businesses who are very concerned with some of the safety aspects that we're currently facing on Coolidge, mirrors getting taken off, and people getting, I think literally, we had a door taken off not too long ago. So I'm sure Amy can speak better to timing on that, but that's something that is underway. So that's something that we'll be looking for in the near future. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kodeckel?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. First of all, I want to give my hats off to Councilmember Blanchard, his wife Barb, and their son Scott, who are main ingredients of the fundraiser that Councilmember Blanchard had mentioned that took place at Rosie O'Grady's. I was fortunate to attend this unfortunate situation, and it was great. And I think if you ever need a replacement for the Energizer battery for the rabbit, you've got Councilmember Blanchard and it's life. They raised $20,000 to help the family, and it was a great, great cause. The public safety, as you've mentioned, had their fire open house. It was a lot of fun. It's fun to see all the kids there. And I want to thank all the people that came out and the Sons of the American Legion, who provided free hot dogs, pop, and chips for everyone there. Congratulations to Tootie and Tallulah's. They're celebrating their second anniversary this Thursday, October 4th, from 6:00 to 9:00. And if you get- And if you get a chance to go into their store, Sally and Jerry are two great owners of the city and there's a lot of stuff to, to purchase there. And the one sign that most women like is, "Your husband called and said you could buy anything you want." And I'd like to wish a speedy recovery to Sergeant Paul Combs, who recently had surgery and is resting comfortably at home. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sessa?
Counselor, I'll be very brief. Just want to also add my congratulations and thanks to everyone who participated in the Public Safety Fire Open House. It was excellent and I really enjoyed it. So thank you. Nothing else, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Subouda?
Thank you, thank you, Your Honor. I have nothing this evening.
Mr. Schneider?
Normally, nothing this evening, Your Honor, but my family really enjoyed the open house, so I think I should give them mention to all the people that partook in that function. I know my kids had a blast and they're already looking forward to it until, for next year. So, thank you.
That must be a testament to how well the open house event was because, you know, in my five years, I think Mr. Schneider's only had three comments or so in the entire time I've been there. So to get him excited enough to speak, that, that is certainly a testament to the event. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend the open house. I had another commitment all day Saturday. I've heard nothing but positive things. Our PSOs work so hard and they do so much to try to be involved in the community with, you know, and with kids and as far as educating them, this, you know, fire and lids for kids, all of their events. And we're very lucky to have such a dedicated group of officers in our community that cares so much. I had the pleasure of attending a Rotary Club meeting today, which I actually attended not as a council member, but as an educator. And it was their kickoff today for the No Place for Hate Anti-Bullying Campaign. The Rotary Club, the Berkeley Rotary Club, has teamed up with the Berkeley Public Schools and other schools in the area are getting involved as well to try to combat this bullying, you know, problem. And Vince Giglioti, the principal at Anderson, was the keynote speaker and he, you know, talked about it, saying that it was almost like an epidemic. You know, you don't want to use that word because it's a very frightening word, but bullying is so pervasive these days. And, you know, for somebody such as myself that works in a school every day and sees it, you know, bullying has changed from, you know, what many of us think. We hear the term bullying, you think it's somebody coming up to you and stealing your lunch money or, or, you know, pushing you down on the playground. For, for today's youth, it's very different. Cyberbullying is just a tremendous, tremendous weight on students right now, especially with the, the Facebook and the Twitter and everything else that's going on allows kids to kind of, you know, bully others, other children and kind of do it, you know, from a safe distance. And a lot of students don't even realize that they are bullying. And some, you know, students don't even realize that, you know, they're being bullied and they just don't, they feel badly about themselves and they're scared to go to school, they're scared to go in certain places in the school. And I just want to, you know, congratulate and certainly support the Rotary Club and the Berkeley Public Schools on this initiative. It is extremely important. I know that they are looking to expand this to perhaps a citywide campaign, not just the schools, but also getting businesses involved and getting the support of all of, all of our residents to try to make Berkeley continue to be the safest place and, you know, educating the students, giving the students the power to, you know, stop or intercede when they see something like that happening. Those are very important things and that's the only way that we are going to combat this very important issue. So again, I want to commend them on their work and wish them luck. Are we okay?
Yes, he'll be here in five minutes, Your Honor.
Okay, with that, then, I would-
Can I just say one thing?
I suppose.
Thank you. I just want to remind everybody that the close of registration for the presidential election is October 9th. If you'd like to come into our office or go to your Secretary of State's office to make your application. Also, the absentee ballots will, are available. They're currently being tested right now in our office, but we should be mailing them towards the end of the week or the beginning of next week, if anybody's wondering about the status of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Prince. With that, can I have a motion to recess into a closed session? Actually, before I do that, just for everybody here, after the closed session, we will not be acting on anything. We will simply be adjourning the meeting. So if you have somewhere to be and you do not want to see the adjournment, feel free to sneak out.
[inaudible]
Ours, too.
Are you waiting?
Is there a motion to recess into closed session?
Move to go into closed session.
Made by Councilmember Kadeko. Is there support?
Support.
Support from Councilmember Baker. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll to recess into closed session?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadeko?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Turbrick?
Yes.